We're called order, the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting of October 10th, 2013. Welcome everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am truly repented for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the dearest symbol of perfect friendship among the United Cultures.
Has everybody had time to go over the agenda this morning?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve it? If you see no change...
I'll approve.
There's a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Rob will give you a one-minute mark if you'll be watching for him. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the future agenda. Request forms are available in the manager's office. So at this time, I will ask for any public input. Go ahead, sir. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name's Glen Novato. My name's Glen Novato. I'm here in reference to the Loma Verde Estates, and good morning to the commissioners and staff. I talked to Tom Sorry about some of the landowners won't sign the plat, and I'm asking that the commission go ahead with Chapter 42, 42A, and condemn the roads because there is a public safety hazard. The road is washed out in the middle, and it's like having a bar ditch down the center of the road. And I do have a letter from the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department in reference to this, which I'll submit to the commission. And also, I wanted to see if the county can bring in some dirt to fill in that bar ditch in the middle of the road, because I know you have filled in parts of North Fork Little Walnut Creek Road when it's washed out, and it sure would be nice to be able to not slide sideways going up the road. And that's about all I have to say.
Anisha, would you get the letter from the Whiskey Creek Fire Department from Mr. Novato?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public input? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lori Ward. I'm a Grant County resident, to quote Mr. Baldwin. And I went out to the fair last Saturday, and I'm telling you what, it was awesome to see that barn up there. I know, everybody worked hard. Everybody here at the county worked hard. All the volunteers worked hard. The barn is top of the line. And me being a farm girl, I really appreciate that stuff. One thing I was disappointed about was that there was no carnival. And I did hear, you know, some complaints from mostly parents that had children with them about there not being a carnival there. And I know that there was a lot of activities going on that same weekend. I know that the carnival was here the week before the fair for a while, and then it was back. So I'm just thinking, maybe the carnies were booked up for that weekend, maybe. So you may consider moving the fair to a different time. I just think that a carnival should be at the fair. But the barn, you guys, I just, it's top of the line. So thank you so much for everybody's work on that. Thanks.
We're called order. The Fair Board actually sets the dates for the fair, and I will make sure that your concern is heard there.
Thanks.
You bet. Any other public input? Come on up.
Let me have to check my phone. Good morning.
Hey.
I'm just gonna judge a little bit on...
Just so we know if this is Chief Lonnie Sandoval.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Chief Lonnie Sandoval. Good morning. We're almost there. And we have... At the beginning of the road, Mr. Davidson lives out in California, is the only one that isn't complying with our requests of signing and getting this next step in the road. The road is really bad, especially by my place. If the county can help us out with some, you know, even if you could just put it out there somewhere, and we'll take from it to do the labor ourselves, it would be helpful. But the question I have is that with the gentleman that lives on the corner of the beginning of our road, he already has the easement of power lines going through there. And with that power line easement, is there any way we can start the project? You know, he already gave us the easement. I mean, that's...
In my, yeah, kind of in history, when I've been here in Grant County, usually a power line easement is very specific, and it's only for power utilities, and it's not for roads. The road access is only for maintenance of those utilities in that, and not for day-to-day traffic. It's the way I've always seen them presented to us at Grant County. So not seeing that power line easement, if it's anything like we get, no, we couldn't use it because it's a specific purpose. You would have to redo the easement and say it is for public access in and out of the subdivision. Otherwise, you can't. You can only use it to run power lines and utilities and maintain those.
And then what about a possible variance, just for that section of the road, where it has to be, we could be skinnier at that point than the rest of the area?
Yeah, you're saying that the road would be narrow at the beginning. But I'm more interested in Mr. Novato's theory, in the 42 and 42A, and I'm not familiar with those.
Those are condemnation.
In a domain.
Yeah.
I know that you guys are having a hard time with this last little, waiting this last little bit. My understanding is that the guy in California hasn't refused at all. We're just having trouble getting ahold of him.
Well, that's the problem, is he's just not answering. You know, he has no interest to him.
Do you have a number, too?
We have his phone number. We've sent him letters. We sent him, we sent him a copy of this.
Sometimes, when you say you're attorney, people will call you back.
Sure. I believe that, yes. I definitely do.
Maybe drop that number off to me, because right now Lori's...
Yeah, Lori has the phone number. She's been very helpful. She's been sending him letters. She's sent him letters and the map and all.
Have we sent him registered letters?
Yes.
I think they're...
No, she sent, I believe it's...
Did you, well, Lori's coming up. Did the lady that I called for you?
Oh, yes. John, appreciate the help. She actually came in and signed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So Lonnie, we're just...
One person. I'm not to them.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know if you guys have seen the map. I haven't seen the updates. This is the last, you can see where...
It was September 11th.
Yeah.
Does anyone see that map?
You have no...
Straight started on the county.
Isn't that the one we have in our...
Yes, it's the same map that was in the notebook from the public here.
So you should have...
We have sent that mail, regular mail. We've corresponded with this individual three times. The first letter he received, I did get a call from him. The only thing I recall in the conversation was that there wasn't a commitment, but he did plan to be in the area, and I believe it was August, but he hasn't been by the office.
Lynn Davidson, is that...
That's correct.
He's the very first one, too, yeah.
That's why it's kind of...
That's why it's kind of clogging him up.
Oh, give me his number?
Yeah. It's kind of clogging up the whole process because he has half of the very first section of the road. And so you kind of can't do anything past there because we don't have that right-of-way. We only have half of a right-of-way.
Could we possibly start from the other side of his property and just leave that the way it is then? Because anything's gonna be better than nothing.
Yeah, I understand.
I think, I mean, before we change gears, let's just try a little harder first before we change the game.
We're gonna look at it.
I was also thinking, what if we moved the road a little bit?
Well...
Is that any...
I had asked, well, and I had asked about moving the road, but I guess the gentleman on the other side of the road has got a rock wall and some structures. His house is close to there.
Well, but the...
And so he's, you can't move it.
The fact of the matter is that we take 60 feet, and we only use about 20. That's what they're saying. So if we, you know, the only bad thing about it is, is you got a guy that's not giving up his piece of property for the deal. It's not a fair deal. But yeah, I think you could end up with a variance and still get a road through there.
I think a variance would be better than a carnival.
I just don't like the idea that some guy in California can hold these guys up and not give up his land. So, I mean, even if we did a variance, we would probably want to do the condemnation afterwards.
Because that's just not fair to these guys.
I totally agree.
I think the district is working on him, because that's obviously...
These residents have been working way too hard for this to just stop the project.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say something. Even if we were to get the dedication of the road, I want to remind the people that it's still probably a six-month process before we're able to actually do the assessment district. So I know sometimes it's unpopular, but I always make the recommendation to the landowners that if each one of those individuals puts a little bit of money in, they can actually get somebody to go in there and fix their road. You know, for $100 or $50 apiece, what do you mean? They can get a motivator in there, maybe some material, and to at least get them to until said time that they can, that the county takes it over, because it's still gonna be a long process, regardless of whether or not we get those signatures or not.
Just if we don't do anything now, we're looking at six months out from the time we do.
Well, and...
About fixing the road.
Yeah. And we do, condemnation process is a long process as well. So it's, and that's where Abby's saying, is if we reach out to this gentleman, and we can get him to sign something, that's a faster process than condemnation, because it takes some time to do the condemnation process.
I just didn't realize we had this.
So we'll make some calls. I'll call. Abby, you'll call.
I'll call. John, call.
Yeah, please text it to me, and I'll call. So...
And we do bring in, yeah, we're at the point now where we're gonna have to bring in material. It's down to the rock, and a blade just is not gonna do any justice in there. We're gonna have to bring in the material and have it done that way, I'm sure, until this process gets going. However, we're kind of hoping the county can help us out with that, because everything that we're putting in, the money that we're putting in now, is gonna be taken away from the money we have to put in when the county takes it over.
I totally understand that, but it's very specific in the Constitution that we cannot upgrade private property.
And just dumping this there would be upgrading. We'd be participating in it. So...
Anything else, Lonnie?
Ah, that's it.
Is there any way that we could get them our price to some of these places where, even if they do all the work and do the purchasing?
Yeah. Under state law, you're not supposed to use the bargaining power of a public entity for personal gain. And so that would be using the bargaining power of us to...
Personal...
What we can do is, we can talk to some of the contractors we use and have them talk with them and see if there's something they can't...
That they can work out.
...help these people out. But as a county, I can provide a bunch of material just for the fact that it would be anti-donation, because I'm giving it to go on private property. And I understand your concern. As soon as we're done, we're gonna come in and bring all this in, which I don't think the material will be lost, because if there's a large hole, that means there's gonna be more material. We're gonna have to bring in, so the cost of the improvement district is gonna go up. So what this is gonna do is, we'll go over the top. So it should reduce the cost of the improvement district if you bring in some materials. Now, they won't be lost, because I don't think we're having any more rain. But, so, I mean, in essence, you're not gonna lose them. It's just paying a little now out of your pockets to reduce the cost later. But we can talk to, we work with Jeb Fowler, runs several pits around. We work with him. We can talk with him and see if they have any types of materials. It might not be the best materials, but it might be something that they can get with you guys and get you cheap toy Cooper. We do stuff with toy. They've got materials that they don't like to use on projects, but could work for your process, because all you're trying to do is fill in the rut. You're doing the temporary fit, so they've got materials that they don't really use, that maybe they can give to you or something like that. Who knows? But I'm willing to make those calls, and I can talk to those guys and see if there's something they can do. But I'm getting in touch with you, Lonnie.
Okay.
And like I said, because a lot of them have stockpiles of materials they just don't use. And it'll help them clean up their yards, get rid of them. Some of it might be Caliche stuff, some stuff, but it'll fill in a rut. It'll do what you need it to do until we can get the improvement district taken care of.
I appreciate any help that you can give us. Everybody appreciates it.
Lonnie, I think that if we don't, because these guys are gonna make these calls today or tomorrow, and if we don't get some responses from that, then I think we need to go ahead and start with the variance process, because this is taking way too long.
Can we look at the situation and see how long condemnation will take?
If he just balks, right?
Well, can we do a variance and say, I don't know if it's a possibility. I have to look at all our ordinance and laws. But if we had the variance, we may not need a condemnation, because we'd be saying that the road would be...
Well, we totally agree. We can get the road without it. It's just not fair that he didn't give up his property.
Like everyone else.
Yep.
By our fairness, he needs to give it up like everyone else.
Well, if we do a variance, we're probably gonna do the condemnation anyway, even if it takes longer. Okay, Lonnie, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This last time that we corresponded with Mr. Davidson, we did send him a return envelope with prepaid postage. So we, that's what we're waiting on at this moment. At least two weeks ago.
For two weeks?
A little bit over two weeks ago.
Okay, so you guys know that, Abby? Did you hear that the last time they sent, they sent the signature page with a prepaid envelope? So he has it. It's sitting there. All he has to do is sign and stick it in the envelope. So when you call, you know what to say.
Yeah.
Okay. Is he aware how he's holding up this process?
I don't know.
Talk to him again.
No, I personally don't have his phone number.
Oh, you don't have?
The reason I talked to him was because he gave us a call. Lonnie does have the phone number.
Will you get the phone number from Lonnie before he takes off, and then Abby and I'll make phone calls this afternoon?
He needs to be a good man.
Thank you.
No. Is that a, is that a... Put a dollar in the pot.
Okay. Is there any other public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approve or disapprove the minutes for September 24th, 2013.
Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2013, regular meeting.
My second. There's a motion in proper second to approve the minutes of September 24th. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. John went over those on Tuesday, but Commissioner Ramos is not here, so you may want to hit the highlights on those.
Yeah. Big highlight?
A big highlight.
The big highlight is that the expenditure report in your packets is dated October 7th. It's for $2,170.270. The major expenditure was the quarterly Soul Community Provider payment that was $1,159,718.14. When you remove that from the total expenditures of $1,894,081, it gets us down to around that $600,000 in normal expenditures without the payrolls added into it. And the rest of the money is the payrolls that we've had. But that's about a normal two-week expenditure process is about the $600,000. It's just that we made the quarterly payment, and we spoke about on Tuesday that this is the quarterly payment that the hospital will receive some funding on. We've gotten clarification that they're receiving Soul Community Provider through December. We just don't know what's gonna happen after January yet. So we've worked with the hospital, with Hidalgo Medical Services, Rideski Insurance Company attended the meeting. And we talked about opening up some enrollment centers for the Affordable Healthcare Act with the healthcare, where you get online and you enroll. The Hidalgo Medical Services has received money in their training. I believe it's 12. It's either 12 or 14 individuals to be certified to enroll people into the process. I guess there's a certification. You have to get through this training. So they're gonna have people certified, and we've talked about setting up at the conference center, a enrollment center on, not where we ran out the side where Gary and Gilbert used to sit on that side, that can be open Monday through Friday and Saturdays. And it'll be staffed by those people from Hidalgo Medical Services, and he, the regional, has some individuals that are being trained. And so they can continually go in there and register from now. They have from, or from October 1st to March of next year to get registered into the healthcare. And so this group will be sitting there working each day. I got an email from Hidalgo Medical Services. They're excited to do it and want to proceed to get that all set up, because they're gonna start releasing public service announcements and their advertisements. And so they want to set that center up, and they'll staff it Monday through Friday, I think it was 8:00 to 5:00, and then 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays.
Are they having, you know, the national news, they talk about electronic glitches? Are they having...
Everybody's having some glitches right now. We spoke about that at our meeting we had the other day, that people are having a hard time getting in. And then when you can get in, my understanding is the process is a two- to two-and-a-half-hour process to get enrolled. It's a very long process. There's certain documents you have to bring with you to be able to enroll. So Hidalgo Medical Services is putting together a list. They're doing all kinds of advertising and announcing so that people will show up with everything they need, so they don't have to stop and go away or come back.
Get in line.
We thought of the conference center, just because we have high-speed internet in there, that some of these buildings, they looked at using like our senior centers that have dial-up. You get two or three people on computers trying to register. That process is gonna go from two hours to probably four hours, because the internet service is so slow. So we can work with Cory Caminos to maybe set up days where the bus goes out to the member's senior center and picks anybody up there that wants to come in and register, and they bring them in, register all those people up, and then take them back out to the member's senior center. Although Leopold is gonna don't, they've given laptops, is what the email from HMS said, that they're letting them use, loaning some laptops to them, so they can set up laptops for this. We're gonna look at the county, any computers and laptops we might have that could be used, because all they need is internet access. They don't need Word and all that. So we've got some we can clean up that'll be good enough for that process, and we'll just have this computer lab set up where they can continually register people to help offset the loss of Soul Community Provider.
There's just so much non-information out there, and people don't know what options to bring. And there's so many people that don't have internet access, that this is the least we can do to provide them.
A little scares them.
Yeah, it is scary, because then if you get in and you're not eligible, then where do you go?
Yeah.
You know, and that's where...
They're paying fines?
Yeah. So that's kind of what we spoke about in a nutshell there, and it's gotten an update.
You get in there and you can't afford it anyway.
So...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the October 7th, 2013 expenditure report.
Second. There's a motion in proper second to approve the October 7th, 2013 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all of the favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. Anisha?
She's gonna make her debut today, so... We'll have to give her a plug. You can sit right there, though.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring domestic violence Awareness Month, October 2013. So at this time, Anisha, will you please read that proclamation?
Okay. Whereas home should be a place of warmth and conditional of safety and peace, tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. Domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance. A family's home becomes a place of fear, hopelessness, and desperation. When a woman is battered by her partner, a child witnesses the abuse of a loved one, or a senior is victimized by family members. And whereas in 1994, passage of the landmark Violence Against Women's Act campaigned by then Senator Joe Bidden, our nation has strengthened its response to this crime and increased the services for victims. We must continue our effort to prevent and respond to domestic violence, as we mourn those who have died because of the domestic violence, celebrate those who have survived and connected, those who work to end violence at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas according to the Department of Justice, approximately 95% of the victims of domestic violence are women. Nationally, 4 million women a year are assaulted by their partners. Every day, at least four women are murdered by boyfriends or husbands. And in New Mexico, one in every four adults will be victims of intimate partner domestic violence in their lifetime. Survey of Violence Victimization, February 2011. And whereas one in three female teenagers in a dating relationship has feared for her physical safety, and one in five teenagers in a serious relationship reports having been hit, slapped, pushed by a partner. And the severity of violence among intimate partners has been shown to be greater in the cases where the pattern of violence has been established in adolescents. And the analysis of 2011 data from the New Mexico Interpersonal Violence Data Central Respiratory Reports, Grant County ranks sixth in the state at 9.4% for domestic violence incidents. Domestic violence is a major public health, social justice, and human rights issue, requiring particular attention, and its intervention must be with the inclusion of both women and men at the levels. Men and women must work together to create models of egalitarian and respectful collaborations. Violence and abuse are never justified. Given the fact that most of the victims and survivors of domestic violence are women and children, work with men must be carried out at both the intervention and prevention levels. It is important to understand how abuse takes root in our families and society, and how this has happened in the context of multiple oppressions in order to move towards the right steps to healing the change. In healing from oppression and recovering, I'm sorry, excuse me, positive aspects of our tradition, we can all find the balance in our lives, recapture a sense of belonging, and becoming productive members of our community, as well as committed partners, nurturing parents, role models for our children and others, and advocates for non-violence. Domestic violence is a learned behavior. As a learned pattern, it can be unlearned and replaced by nonviolent beliefs, attitudes, expectations, and behaviors. We all need to be involved in helping to create safe and healthy relationships and families, and pledge our home to be a place for peace. Core ads, since 1983, Our Refuge has been actively involved in addressing domestic violence in our community. Our Refuge has collaborated with numerous people and groups to respond, educate, and bring awareness to all people about domestic violence. At the same time, Our Refuge works with the men who have used the violence against, who has used violence against their partners and children. And Our Refuge engages men who have stopped their violence and want to continue their journey towards non-violence, and men who have never used violence and want to join the work of eradicating domestic violence from our communities. To this end, October 2013 DV Awareness Month is designated to community peace pledging that every home is a place for peace. These efforts will strengthen our relationships and our homes and build a safer and peaceful community. Now therefore, we, the Grant County Board Commissioners, hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence, supporting those who are working toward the end, toward its end, making personal commitments to have a voice against domestic violence, and to pledge that each home is a home for peace in our community. Done on the 10th day of October 2013 by the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Anisha. Timing's everything. I didn't worry. The sheriff was fixing to have to get up there and do a speech for you.
I just wanted to thank you for your support. Sorry, I was in wait, but I was at Judge P. Hall's office. So I have four more, some little bitty packets. I have one for the manager. Thank you. Thank you. For those of you in the conference. As you know, or you may not know, this is Eldefeujo's 30th year of community service. So domestic violence continues to be a major public health issue. So thank you for helping us proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I've given you, and it's being passed around, a copy of our flyer for activities that we're doing this month. So we hope that the community will continue to embrace and respond to this issue. We're asking two things from the community this year. One is to make a pledge that your home is a shelter for peace. And what we're asking is that everybody, in making that pledge, create a quilting square that reflects your home. Maybe it's a teepee, or a trailer, or a house, or it's the woods, whatever home represents to you, your children, your family, your pets. But anyways, create a quilt square. We've got a lot of fabric and a lot of material. We've got volunteers that are gonna make what we're calling the Community Peace Quilts. So that's an easy action step for people to make is to make a pledge that their home is a place for peace. The second thing we would like the community to do is to stand with us on October 29th at Golf Park for 15 minutes of silence for all victims at 6:00 PM. So we just had a training, a 20-hour training last week. We had a great turnout from the community and we are gonna be working with the faith community and asking them to, during the month of October, provide prayers for families and to offer through their congregations more awareness about this issue. So we've got these baskets that are making their way through the churches during the month of October. So thank you again for your support and in particular Commissioner Hall who has been a founder of Eldefeujo but also an advocate and was such an extraordinary educator in his judicial work. So I know you stood with us last year, Commissioner Hall, and so I hope all of you can join us this year. Thank you.
If you'll just stay right there, we got a little road now. I'm gonna take, I have a 16-year-old daughter that I'm gonna put this on her key ring. That'll be perfect. Thank you for the gear.
You're welcome.
At this time-
If I may, I would like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2013.
In a second. The motion is second to approve Domestic Violence Awareness Month is October 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? Thank you for all you do, very much.
Thank you.
In favor, six and five saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
If you'll stay right there, we'll get some pictures.
I'd like to include the sheriff who's on our board, he's vice president. Where do you want us?
Oh, in Captain's office.
Thank you.
Do you have one, Roger?
Have a good day. Oh, gracias. Wear your pants properly.
Okay, next item on the agenda, insurance proposal given by Robert Radesky and I think he has a guest also.
This is one of the commissioners' notice is we spoke about it a little bit. What we've done is currently Grant County is in the risk management pool with the state in New Mexico. This year, we received information from them, there'd be a 15% increase in our rates. And not knowing if that's gonna go up even more in January because they've opened an enrollment because of the Affordable Healthcare Act, that we could even see more of an increase in January.
That's our present carrier.
That's our present carrier with state risk management. So when we found out all that information, we started, we began to talk with Mr. Radesky about the possibilities of us leaving the insurance, the state risk management insurance pool, and going out on our own because of our experiences. It's not the greatest, but it's not the worst experience. We're under 100%, we're about a 70% experience rating. And so we have a good experience rating in the state risk management pool, we're competing with all the other entities that are in there, that if they have bad experience, we all pay for it. It's not looking at us individually, it's if, if Barnaleo County has a lot of bad debt, or bad experience, bad healthcare costs, rates could go up 25% and we have no choice but to pay 25%. So that's what started off of these discussions to create this presentation that Mr. Radesky will give you today and let you know where he went from there. And then if the commission wishes for us to proceed further down this path of leaving the state pool and going out on our own, at the next meeting, we'll come back with some agreements or whatever it is that we have that comes from the insurance companies to proceed on that. But right now, this is just the proposal that Mr. Radesky's worked on and bringing to the commission.
Okay, thank you, John. You have sworn, Mr. Radesky.
Thank you, I'm Robert Radesky. I appreciate the opportunity to work with staff on this project. Lynda Voskis has been great to work with. John has been okay.
He has his good days and bad days.
And so at the end of Mr. Radesky's presentation-
We've put some effort into this, into this proposal. Mr. Chairman, how much time do you envision me taking? Because we can take a lot or we can do a quick overview.
We normally do around 15 minutes, but you know what? This is important.
It is important.
It's important for our employees. So if you can keep it as short as possible, we're-
I will try to be as concise as possible, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we have time for questions because I know that there's probably some questions.
Yeah, and the 15 doesn't include your question, any questions.
Okay. So let's talk about a broad overview of what we do in our company. We are an employee benefits company, that's what we do. We've been doing it for 20 years. We have clients in Silver City, in Texas, in Arizona, and this is where we specialize. It's been about five years, six years maybe, since we had the county, and the county went to the state risk pool. There was some advantages to going at that time to the state risk pool. At that time, the premiums were very similar, but there was more options at that point in time. At that point in time, we had some claims that were going on, so our, you know, what we had with Blue Cross was a little bit expensive and at that time it made sense. Since then, you know, with communicating with staff, I think that some of the problems that have been experienced with the current situation is that the state is overwhelmed and so a lot of the HR functions have been forced on some of your staff. There's enrollment periods that have been forced on some of the staff. It's been oppressive for some of the folks that are working here just to get through all of the requirements that are outlined in what we do. So when we outline what our services are, it is helping, doing meetings and helping your folks with claims issues, with transition of care issues, if they're network physician, if they need help with a network physician or those types of things. The other thing that's unclear is, as Mr. Sari pointed out, we are still a little bit unclear on what kind of tariffs are coming with the state-funded plan. Because, we're just unclear. There's some mandates with the Affordable Care Act that a lot of people will have to pay taxes and it's unclear. So what we did, just to be clear, is we compared your current rates without any additional taxes, without any additional rate-ups, to our current rates, what we proposed, which is a Presbyterian plan, they came out to be the most cost-effective. And those rates have the ACA fees built into them for January 1. Okay, so keep in mind that there may be a raise in the current rates that we won't have with Presbyterian. So a quick overview, we went out to, if you'll take a look at what I gave you on the first page, we went out to Blue Cross, Loveless, United, and Presbyterian. Okay? With a group, you have about 150 people on the group. And so with only 150 people on the group, the only way that any of these insurance carriers will quote is if they get all of the business. There's no way that we can split it up and give some to Press, some to Blue Cross, some to Loveless. So keep that in mind. Any carrier would want the whole group. Okay? Blue Cross was not competitive, Loveless was not competitive, United chose not to quote. With the dental-
Right here on the front?
Yeah, just right there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, my bad.
I'm gonna give a broad overview and then we can drill down if you choose. Delta Dental was the most competitive bidder. Actually, we had another one that was more price competitive, but they didn't have the dentists. So my recommendation would be, if we make a move, would be to stay with Delta. When we stay with Delta, we're actually moving to a fully insured plan and so what that means is that on your current plan, you have a lifetime ortho benefit for kids and a lifetime ortho benefit for adults, that would actually reset. Okay? One disadvantage we have with the Delta over what you have now is the way that we quoted is Dr. York and Dr. Huckins are not in the network and so there is, if someone has any of those, either one of those doctors, they can still go, but they would pay more out of pocket. All of the other dentists are in. And I would sure, if we make a move, I will call each of those dentists and make them aware that we have a change coming and they can, anytime they want, sign up to those networks. So they will be given an opportunity if they choose to become in-network on the PPO plan. So that is the recommendation there. Vision, I couldn't find a vision plan that would compete completely apples to apples. Our vision is more expensive. They have VSP now, you have VSP on the state plan. VSP is an option for us, we went to VSP and they're about double what you're paying now. And it's not completely counterintuitive because VSP has 20,000 people on the plan and they're going to 150 people. So that's just one of the, that's just one of the things that we have to deal with. We recommend going with Reliance Standard who has a similar plan and it's more price competitive, and they also use the VSP network. So no one would have to change doctors. Life insurance and ABD insurance, those are similar benefits. What we quoted was a $50,000 plan for everybody. And then we would give them the ability to buy up if they want more coverage on a voluntary basis. Short and long-term disability, this is a real Achilles heel and Mr. Sari and I have had thorough discussions on this. Would you not say that we had thorough discussions? One of the problems that you have on the current plan is both long-term and short-term disability are voluntary. So some people are not covered. Okay? That's a problem for me, I don't like that. We insure HeLa Regional and we have claims on the long-term disability side that are phenomenal, that if they didn't have this type of coverage, they'd lose houses, educations, cars, those types of things. And you've got right now, people that have the ability to say, "I don't want that." And typically, those people that say they don't want it are kids, right? From 19-years-old to 30-years-old, who don't think they're ever gonna be in a long-term disability situation. So that's a real problem for me philosophically with your current plan. The short-term disability is not that big of a deal, it gets them through, for the first, the elimination period is 28 days currently, and then that short-term disability goes through two years. Okay? One of the interesting caveats in your current plan is if someone hasn't paid the premium for the first 12 months, they can become disabled and not, they are not eligible for a claim. Okay? With the plan that we're proposing, that is not the case. We do have a pre-existing condition limitation on there, and that's an industry standard limitation. But if they sign up and then become, and then get in an accident of some sort, even that next day, that benefit will pay. Okay? Even on a voluntary basis. So there are some severe limitations with the state's plan. The biggest limitation with the state's plan that you have now is long-term disability. Mr. Sari, if you become disabled right now, what is your benefit amount for your current plan? If you chose to buy into it? As a percentage?
40%.
Exactly.
It's a maximum of $2,000.
That's right. So on your current plan, if in fact he chose to buy up, and if in fact, the way I read your contract, and I may be wrong on this, but if I read it right and interpreted it right, he would have to stay on that plan for at least a year to be eligible for a claim. And if he is out of work, the state is gonna pay that claim and it's gonna be, if he's making $1,000 a month, they're gonna pay him $400 a month for two years. And then say, "Good day." So if he has a severe accident, that's all it is. What we're proposing, and the only way that we can get this proposal done is if the county pays 100% of the premiums on this. The premiums on that is about $2,100 to cover every employee. And that, if we do that, every employee will have 60% coverage. Okay?
With a limit or what?
With, there is a limit, but it's not a two-year limit.
It's $5,000. You said it was $2,000.
Yes, up to $5,000.
Okay.
Okay? Up to $5,000. So the other thing is, there is a benefit schedule that you have that will pay to age 65. So if Mr. Sari is disabled with the current plan, with the proposed plan, the plan will pay 60%, up to $5,000. Okay? And it'll pay up to retirement age. Okay? And then there's a schedule, if someone is getting close to retirement age, it's included if you have any specific questions. It's a shorter period of time, but it actually is listed in there. But that, if I was gonna look at one Achilles heel of the state's plan, it was phenomenal when I saw that. So let's move on. I wanted to go, is there any questions up to now? Because I wanted to kind of go through some specifics on the medical insurance plan for time's sake.
Am I having a question? Can we keep moving, Robert?
Okay. Medical snapshot, there is, when you look at what I proposed, especially on this quick summary, if you'll notice, I show that there's an estimated cost. What is not estimated is, yes, it is the quick premium summary. Okay? And it was in the left page of your folder. The reason I say estimated is because of this. You currently have a high and a low op- You currently have a high and a low option. The high option is Blue Cross, the low option is either Presbyterian or Loveless. Okay? You have, with this medical snapshot, okay? If you get to the medical snapshot, what we look at is, you've got 20 families on the high plan, employee and spouse, you've got 14, employee and children, you've got 10, and you've got 54 families on that. Okay? If we look at the same high, when we proposed, when we proposed Presbyterian, we have a high option and a low option. If the same number of people stay on the high option, and the same number of people stay on the low option, as is currently on there, then this will be the premium. The reason that I say estimate is because I don't know until we have meetings and visit with all the people, what, where those people are gonna land. Okay? The premiums are not estimated, those premiums will be guaranteed for this year. Okay? So let's be clear on that. So, we're looking at a premium of $500.06 that you're currently paying for Blue Cross on the high plan. The Presbyterian plan will be $443. So what we did is, we negotiated a premium that's about $18,000 a month less than what you're paying. So let's talk about the benefits of, and the benefit differences between those two plans. And where we're gonna find those is right here, in these two spreadsheets. Okay? So if you take a look at the, at the high option, a couple things that was unclear when, when I look at anyone's prescription card on the state plan, let's be clear about something, and that is, we love Blue Cross. I do a lot of business with Blue Cross. But what the state has done with Blue Cross is changed their methodologies to the point that we couldn't really recognize some of the things that were happening inside of this insurance plan. So a couple things that were unclear at the beginning and became clear through this process is, if someone goes to the hospital right now on the Blue Cross plan, they have to meet $1,000 calendar year deductible, and then they have to go through this $700 deductible. And then they have 20% to, on top of that. So, that is a plan that I've never seen before, and I've only, well, of course, I've only been doing this for 21-years. So, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of stuff that I haven't seen. But I...
I loved that.
You did. And when I looked at your card...
I paid the deductible, and then I paid the next deductible, and then I started paying copays, and I thought, "Well, this isn't very good insurance."
Well, and what did I tell you? You got good, you got fine insurance. You showed me your card, did you not? And I said, "That, that was completely unclear on your card." As a matter of fact, if you pull that card out right now, it doesn't say anything about that $1,000 deductible. It says nothing about it. Right? So there's stuff in this, in this current plan that, in my opinion, is, is unclear to you folks. Okay? So when we, when we, when we look at the Presbyterian plan, there is no, there's not that $1,000 deal. Right? That $1,000 deductible before you reach your deductible, before you get to the copays. So when you compare the Blue Cross plan, it shows a $700 deductible, right? And the Presbyterian, it shows a 750. So you're, you know, you kinda think, "Gosh, that's, that's not as good a plan." But the fact of the matter, the Presbyterian plan design has many advantages over what Blue Cross is showing. So in all fairness to Blue Cross, just to be clear, we love them, but this plan design is, is designed not to pay claims, because in my opinion, and with our research, these claims are really, really going strong at the, at the state level.
And what I talked about yesterday is, is, for instance, on the plan, if somebody has to go to a specialist, it's a $50 copay currently, or if you haven't met your deductible, you have to pay the first $700 of that visit, then you pay your $50. Under the Presbyterian plan, you pay $30. You don't have to meet any of the deductible, you pay $30 to go see that specialist. So, you've saved, because if you go to a specialist, it's almost $700 is what they bill.
Right. I can't tell you how much better this plan is. It's hard to calculate, there's no, there's no percentage, but I would guess it's probably 10% better, just in total cost. Right? So let's go through a couple things that, that are not gonna be completely clear in, in this. With the current medication copays, you got a $5 copay, generic, and then you go into percentages with the current Blue Cross plan. So if you see the, the brand name, it's $30 to $90 max copay. It's because it's a 30% copay. With the Presbyterian, it's just a $35 copay period. So some of your, some of your folks are actually paying $90 for a brand-name drug, with Presbyterian it'd be 35. Okay? And that's the same on the non-preferred brand, it's a percentage, with Presbyterian, it's a $55 copay. Listen, because this is important, everybody. With the Presbyterian plan, this is an ACA-compliant plan, and one of the rules that Obamacare has on that plan is that regardless of all of the things that you get, all of the copays that you have on this, it doesn't matter if it's medications, copays, whatever, there is an out-of-pocket maximum of $3,250 on this plan. So with the plan that we're proposing, with Presbyterian, if people meet that out-of-pocket, their drug copays go away. Okay? On the current plan, that's not how it's working now. And it's unclear to me, I cannot tell you that that's the way it's gonna be in the future or not, it's unclear to me whether they're gonna adopt ACA-compliant rules or not with the state plan. Okay? But right now, if someone meets their out-of-pocket maximum, the drug copays go on and on and on. Okay? So when, if you get someone that's chronically ill on the plan that we're proposing, it's going to be substantially better for those people. Any questions on that? Okay. Let's talk about network, because that's gonna be, that's gonna be an interesting thing. Network is a big deal. With Presbyterian, we have a PPO network, they've got, they've got their networks, their network, which has substantially the same doctors in Silver City as the Blue Cross does. Okay? If you need to go out of state, that, you still have that ability. They use a company called Multiplan, and if you go out of state and go to, say, Mayo, who does have a Multiplan agreement, you still are in-network at Mayo. Okay? If you decide to go out of network and go to a doctor that isn't, isn't in the Multiplan network, then you will pay this out-of-network, this out-of-network pricing that you see. Now, you can see that the out-of-network pricing is a little bit different. I think it's a little bit better in some instances with the Presbyterian. You can see with Blue Cross, if you go out of network, it's 50%. With Presbyterian, it's stronger, at 40%. But let's be clear about this, Blue Cross does have a bigger network than if you go out of state. Okay? So if you're, if you are really sick and you wanna go out of state, you do have more choices with Blue Cross. There's no doubt. Okay? But with our experience, Presbyterian will solve most of those problems. Okay? We will have, I guarantee you, there's gonna be, in full disclosure, there's gonna be people, when we have 150 people insured, 150 employees, there's gonna be some people that have relationships that may have to change with their doctors. But that's gonna be the same if you change insurance plans anywhere. Okay? That's why we're here, to help those people get through those changes. If there are any changes, if there are any doctors that are in the middle of treatment right now, then Presbyterian will take those situations on a case-by-case basis and get those people through that treatment. And once they get through that treatment, it's typically a three-month period, it could be longer than that if necessary, but it's typically a three-month transition, and then they transition to a Presbyterian contracted doctor. Okay? Let's be clear about this, too. If anyone has an emergency, life or limb-threatening emergency, need to go to urgent care, need to go to the emergency room, all of those are in-network, anywhere in the United States. Okay? So, that's the scoop. So it's typically, if someone chooses to go to a, to a physician that's out-of-network. That leads us to the next thing, and that's kids that are out of, out of state going to school. Okay? If they're on this, they can go to any Multiplan doctor and be in-network. Anytime they need to go to urgent care, they're in-network. Emergency room, they're in-network. Typically, at least when my kid went to school, she'd come back and do all of the services in, you know, in Silver City, do the female stuff in Silver City, and then if they needed, you know, sore throat or whatever, they'd go, you know, to wherever they go, and it would be okay.
Or universities, are they...
Most of those are in-network. They're just, they're like an urgent care.
Right.
They're classified as an urgent care, so that's, that's typically what happens. So, that happens all the time with the Presbyterian network. I mean, that's, even with an HMO, and we're gonna talk about that in just a sec, I'm sure I'm way past 15-minutes, so let's... Okay. I could talk for hours, so just keep me on task. No, no, keep me on task.
He's been hanging around John too much.
He talks more than John. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. If we counted the words, I'm not sure. All right, so, that's the high option.
Paul, did I mention the high option?
Okay. That's the high option. The low option would be an HMO plan, and typically, what I envision, who I would envision would get on that is the young, healthy people who never go to the doctor, or who go to the doctor just for a physical every three, four, or five-years. Okay? One of the reasons that those people would go onto the HMO, let me, let me talk about what you couldn't do on the HMO. You couldn't go to Mayo. Okay? So I wouldn't want to be on that plan personally, because I'm getting to the age that if I wanna go there, I wanna go there, right? But you get some 19s or 30-year-olds that never really go, their out-of-pocket costs would be less to go to the doctor. Okay? So for example, on the PPO, on the high option, if, if we go in to the doctor and then get blood work, we pay our copay, which interestingly, I should've said is less, it's a $20 copay with Presbyterian, and you guys are on a $30 copay. So if I go in and get blood work, I pay $20, and then my $1,000 of lab work goes to my deductible. Right? So I pay most of that, at least upfront. Okay? With the HMO plan, if anyone needed blood work, that's included in the copay. So if you go to the doctor on the HMO plan, the office visit really is 30 bucks, but everything else is included in your copay. So if you need an X-ray, it's included in the copay. Okay? So all of those things, there are reasons that we have two choices, because in a lot of situations, it's less out-of-pocket to go to the HMO plan. Okay? The other thing is, if some, one of those younger people needed a service that, let's say someone got leukemia, okay? And Presbyterian, the Presbyterian network in Albuquerque didn't have doctors to take care of that situation, they would then refer out to a Mayo or MB Anderson or something, if they couldn't take care of that situation in-house. Okay? Then, the other thing is, at open enrollment time, if that person wanted to go onto the, the high plan, they could move. Okay? So, keep those in mind. Is there any specific questions up to now? Because you've got a lot of data in front of you. Yes, sir.
Why is the mail order prescription drugs copay higher than the, the regular?
Why is that...
Do you get 90-days' worth of them? Is that what it is?
Oh, yes. You get 90-days. Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, that makes a little sense, okay.
Um...
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Anybody else have a question?
I don't know, are you gonna get into air ambulance? It seems to be a concern of a lot of people.
Do you really want that? Do you really? I, I get fired up on that one.
There's so much of it going on now.
It's terrible. We, I tell you what, that's, that's another reason why you need my services, and I gotta tell you, we have, we've had Senator Morales in my office fighting, "Oh, I don't even wanna start. How much time do you have?" That's a problem. I, I would love to talk to you three individually, or together, or in a public meeting, and I'd like to have those people right here. If you don't mind, would you set that up, please?
We'll try.
I would love to do that.
Aren't they contracted with the hospital?
There is no contract. They're drilling, I'm gonna tell you, I gotta talk about this. 30-seconds. We got a client, we got... I'm sorry, John.
I don't do this.
Listen to me. Listen. We got a client. I know, on TV, and I probably, this is probably too much information, let me, let me... We got a client that works at the hospital, that goes to the emergency room from work, gets flown out, signs a piece of paper, in my, in my opinion, that was coercion, and I'm sure these, these airplane people are gonna listen to this, and come on, let's talk about it. I believe it was coercion. He signed a piece of paper that said, "If he gets billed more than his insurance company, we'll pay, he'll pay the difference." The difference was $20,000.
Sam?
I'm, I'm, I am not making this up. We asked, in fairness to Blue Cross, we asked for two appeals and then a grievance hearing. At the grievance hearing, we had Senator Morales, our client, who else was there, Paula? There was, it was a whole group of people. In fairness to Blue Cross, they paid that claim, and really shouldn't have had to. It's, it's a real problem, and it's a community problem. And so it is, it is gonna be a problem. These insurance carriers are trying to stay in business with all the stuff that's going on, and to pay $25,000 and agree to pay $25,000, in my opinion, is a fair amount. When they're asked to pay $40,000 or $50,000 for an air ambulance, I think that's too much. That's my personal opinion.
We will try to set something up.
That would be great.
John and Brian Cunningham on that.
You know, because of that, you know, because of the stories that I've heard...
It's terrible.
...why have I went out and bought a separate policy just for air ambulance?
Yeah, they charge you...
$30 a month.
Yeah. I agree.
We've had the incident with an inmate that was thrown out, and indigent paid $1,000 for the $20,000 flight to Las Cruces, and then the air ambulance came after us and was threatening to sue us to get the rest of the $20,000. So we turned Beth Allred loose on them from the hospital, and let them know that if they ever wanted any other indigent money from Grant County, they would take the $1,000 and be happy, or else they would get nothing when they flew into the station.
But the individuals don't have that type of, you know, thing. But we need to stick to what, what we're doing today. Okay?
Really, I'm proud of what we were able to do. We, in my opinion, we've increased the benefits by going with one carrier, we've saved you $18,000 a month on that piece, and I'm proud of that. I can't save you some, you know, I can't save you money on each, each different aspect of it. I mean, the bottom line, if you look at it, I don't know where my page is now, it's, what's the savings? $10,000 a month, or something like that?
$13,000 before...
Before you pay me. Okay.
So it's about $9,000 a month savings.
And, we increased the benefits, we, we, we increased the, the long-term disability, we increased the, the health insurance benefits.
Question?
And a $9,000 savings includes, that includes the cost if the commission picks up the full cost of the long-term disability benefit, which currently is a voluntary thing to the employees. So, that's including an additional cost we currently don't have under our plan.
Sure.
So it's an increased benefit than our current plan, plus we're picking up that entire cost, is the proposal that Mr. Radzuski's give, that shows a $9,000 savings.
Barry, you have any... Sorry to get all fired up, John.
I was fixing to blow my whistle.
I know. I gotta behave in these things. My wife said, "You behave." I'm sorry, I didn't. I appreciate the opportunity.
You bet. Hey Sheriff, I saw you just came in. Did you have any questions for Robert on, on this stuff? If you do, I'm sure he'll give you a card before he leaves, and the other electeds, please make yourself available to ask questions, and really know what we're, what road we're going down, so you can come back to me later.
Yeah, Mr. Sheriff, one of the things that I talked to John about, was talking about this yesterday, and I don't know exactly how we would do it, but I would like the opportunity, before we even voted on this, is to, is to maybe give a presentation to the employees, so that they may have some questions, and then have input to the commissioners.
There's absolutely nothing wrong with that at all, because we're not really okay on anything.
No.
So, and I'm sure Robert would love an opportunity to...
I would probably say that again.
If you mind. Yeah, if you want us to do it.
We'd do that. So our scope of services will include meetings with every, every individual at every location, and then solving their problems, their problems and such.
And if somebody is in the, in the care of a doctor that's not in the plan, you guys would deal with the insurance with that?
Absolutely.
We call you?
Yes.[1775.88] Well, the thing is, the problem with everything that's going on now is, is people, you know, can't, everyone needs an advocate, because this thing is changing quick, and that's what we provide for you folks as well.
Well, and one thing we're running to right now, that this, if we go with a solution to solve this, is currently Renee, um, our HR, um, is, she's doing new employee orientations, trying to do training during the hires of the new employees, the drug testing, the physicals. And then, the state is making her every six months do an enrollment, so she has to go to every employee and verify marriage licenses, birth certificates, redo the enrollment papers, load it in there, and if somebody has a problem with a doctor, she's got to call state. And this goes, if we go this route, that's what Robert and his staff do for us. They, if we have a new employee, instead of Renee sitting down with them and helping them fill out the paperwork and choose the insurance they need, we would just set an appointment up for them to go over to Robert's offices, and then he would take care of all that. If they had an issue, they'd go to Robert, and he would take care of calling the insurance and working out those claims issues for them, instead of Renee having to spend her time doing that as well as all the other duties she's doing. So, it would take a big burden. So, the true savings to the county is a lot larger than what we see on paper because of the manpower savings that we have with Renee's office, and Linda helping her, and all of us trying to help her get through those tough times. Um, she puts in a lot of overtime during the registration, and we have to do an open enrollment again in January, that we just did it in June, and we're going to have to do it all over again in January and fill out all new forms. You just can't send something up that says, "Nothing has changed." You got to start it all over again.
So, let's be clear about that. Forget about Renee's cost. Take a look at, if everyone has, if you take a look at every single person, you do one man hour on that bill. How expensive is that open enrollment, or that enrollment? It's not cheap. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I worked for a company that Robert was the broker for in the, in the past, and he did exactly everything he said he was going to do. So, I appreciate you coming for us today.
Thank you.
And if there's anybody else having questions before we let you go.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rob. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, this is a presentation for funding requests from the National Center for Frontier Communities. Are we all set up? Are close to it?
I think so.
Rob, do you need to remove the paper?
Please.
If you don't mind, just say, hey, for the record, and you may begin.
I will do that. I first need to lower the mic significantly, unless you all have a, a little stand for...
Do you want a stool?
Us that are five feet tall. No, this is fine, thank you. So, good morning. Commissioner Ramos, Commissioner Caston, Commissioner Hall, Manager Sari, county staff, and members of the audience. My name is Lisa Jimenez. I am a contractor with the nonprofit Resource Group, which is a program of the National Center for Frontier Communities. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal to you this morning. I'm going to give you, just in the interest of time, just a brief overview of what you have already received in your packet. Um, so if you have questions, if you'd like more detail, please feel free to let me know. Um, I'd also, just for the record, like to take a moment to let the public know that our commissioners are very good stewards of our public funds. I can tell you that, um, they've asked me some really tough questions over the past several weeks that we've been involved in this process, and I really do appreciate that, and I hope that the members of our county do as well. Um, I'd also just like to mention briefly that, um, our proposal did receive the highest approval rating from the Grant County Health Council's Review Committee. Um, you see that the title of my presentation today is Better Together. Um, what I'm here to talk about is how we can work together to build a stronger nonprofit sector for all of the residents of Grant County. So, with that, let me, oh, ooh, that is a very sensitive mouse, okay. So, let me just jump in here and, and help just explain briefly who we are. I know you have, um, heard from me before, so I won't spend too much time, but we are a locally-based consulting service to nonprofits, community organization, organizations and coalitions. Um, I mentioned, we are a, a program of the National Center for Frontier Communities, which many people are not even aware of that organization. It's a ten-year-old nonprofit that is nationally, national, but based here in Silver City, New Mexico. Um, the National Center contracts with Hidalgo Medical Services for all of its administrative and support services, and we are housed at their offices at, well, at the CHI office at 902 Santa Rita Street. Um, essentially, I, what we are, you know, again, like I said, we're here, we, we really work to build a stronger, more effective nonprofit sector. We're kind of like, for the nonprofits, we're sort of like a Chamber of Commerce, personal coaches, and, um, a local consulting firm all rolled into one. As many nonprofits know, as all of you know, there really aren't a lot of technical service and training opportunities in this part of the state. They're often provided up north. And even up north, no one is doing what we're doing. No one is providing the same kind of level of service that our program provides. Um, so let me just explain quickly kind of the heart of what we do. We work with nonprofits in what we call our longer-term strategic consulting process. And that always begins with a capacity, a needs assessment. So, we go, it's a ninety-minute facilitated process with staff and board members, and what that, what that assessment does is help us prioritize and identify what the needs are for that particular organization. Then, we create work plans designed to address those areas. We assign particular consultants. We match consultants to the organization based on their culture and the needs presented, and then we monitor that process very closely. Um, I guess the other quick point here, let me just, the CCOP, well, let me back up here. The, all of our consulting services are research-based. Our model is based on the ten, what are known as the ten best practices for providing consulting services to nonprofit organizations. And this, there's a gentleman named Thomas Becker, I won't get into all of his, that information, but our model is based on research. Um, the CCOP, what that stands for is our Consultant Community of Practice. We work with a group of consultants, they're professional, they're vetted, they have a lot of experience, references, and those, that group, we also manage and work with very closely to improve their abilities, improve their toolkit, if you will, so that they can provide a wide variety of quality services to our nonprofit clients. Um, collective impact support for community coalitions and organizations. Um, collective impact, I've been here before the commission to talk about that model. It's an excellent, well-tested model for addressing challenging social problems, frankly. Um, and I have dabbled in that a little bit with, with the support of the county, particularly to address two areas that were identified by the Health Council's Community Needs Survey back in twenty, twenty-twelve, one of them being affordable housing or the lack thereof, and increasing activities for children and youth. And I have reported to the commission, I think it was back in April, I talked about that. Um, and then finally, we are part of a national evaluation. We are being evaluated along with many, many, many other organizations, but we're one of the few rural organizations that's actually part of this national evaluation process, which is really exciting, because it's helping us learn the differences, you know, what kinds of consulting services, what kinds of trainings and workshops are really the most effective in a rural environment. And here's, um, just a brief list, definitely not a complete one, of some of the nonprofit organizations that we've worked with in the last year. Um, you can see here, the Volunteer Center, you guys are, you're all familiar with, they're working to, of course, secure our local food supply, among other things. Guadalupe Montessori School, we've worked with them. LifeQuest is one of our probably longer-term clients. Clay Festival and the Southwest Festival, the Written Word, I don't know if any of you were able to attend any of their, the festival events, but they were very professionally done, very well organized, and I think those, they're both very, very, very promising economic development opportunities here in the county. Um, a few others, Literacy Linklay Amos, um, which of course, as you all know, provides literacy services throughout the county. The Gila Valley Public Library, they ran into, into problems when their librarian became ill, and they had suddenly no one to manage the library, so we stepped in to help them. Um, I think the others, you, you are all familiar with. Fort Baird Restoration Project, we were very involved with helping them start up their 501(c)(3).
Sir, do I have a, do I have a copy of that list?
Oh, absolutely.
Because that's not in our packet, and I didn't get one then. I'd like to have a list of those.
Sure, and also, again, that's just a very brief list. That is definitely not a comprehensive.
But I would like to have a list.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so, just briefly, again, what we've done in the past year, we provided five hundred hours of strategic consulting services with the support of Freeport-Mackay. Now, when I speak about the five hundred hours, again, that is the longer-term strategic planning and consulting work that we do with the nonprofits, which we have found, that is the piece that is the most effective in actually creating change and building stronger organizations. So, that is really the heart and foundation of the work that we do. Um, and that frankly is the reason that we're here today. Um, you know, we're trying to do the right thing and not continue to compete for those very, very competitive, uh, community investment fund dollars. We received fifty thousand dollars from the CIF Fund last year to support our work, and we just don't feel comfortable competing with, against our own clients for that, for that very limited funding. So, that's why we're reaching out to local government in hopes that we can continue providing the support to nonprofits without competing for that Freeport money. Um, we've provided more than two hundred hours of free curbside consulting. This is a very, very unique, um, piece of our, of the work that we provide, a very unique service here in the community. Um, it is free. It's every Wednesday morning at our office, nine to noon. And what we do, if people come in on a walk-in basis, any kind of nonprofit question, anything related to nonprofit startups, uh, board issues, strategic planning, governance, whatever the issue might be, we sit down and work with them and help them. We review documents, um, we provide any kind of consulting services that a nonprofit may, may need. And one thing about the curbside consulting, I think that's really important, is that one of the, I think probably most important functions of that service is oftentimes, people will come in and say, gee, I've got this great idea, I want to start a new 501(c)(3), and I really counsel them and make sure that they understand all the responsibilities that are involved with a 501(c)(3). It's not just, you know, you get some papers together and it's done. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. And so, I really sit down with individuals, work with them, and oftentimes will refer them to other organizations, existing nonprofits, where they can maybe collaborate so that we're not creating more nonprofits and frankly, some redundancy in services. So, I think that's one of the most important things we do, and we also do a lot of, of course, help with startups that legitimately, uh, have a good reason to create a nonprofit organization. Um, collective impact, again, I mentioned affordable housing, activities for children and youth, and with this model, what we're really trying to do is, is work closely with the Health Council to provide support services for, to address some of the more challenging social problems in our community. Um, and then finally, um, again, working with the Health Council and others on our planning committee, we've been, we're involved in creating the very first-ever Southwest New Mexico Resource Conference for nonprofits, um, and supporting community needs and priorities as were identified not only by the Health Council's, um, Planning Committee, but also the Community Needs Assessment that was conducted in, in twenty-twelve. And also, you know, one more thing about the conference, we are really, um, working to not only, um, use that opportunity to educate and train and support nonprofits, we also see that as an economic development opportunity. We're hoping to link that to another event perhaps here in the community, and use that to, to bring people in from outside of Grant County. We're going to be inviting, um, nonprofits from six counties, not just the four-county region, but six counties. Sierra, as well as some members of the nonprofit community in Doniana. Um, and then, you know, I think it's important to, to think about why, that why is the nonprofit sector so important? I think a lot of us just sort of don't really consider them and kind of take our nonprofit sometimes for granted, um, particularly when I say here in the new normal. The new normal, you know, back in September of two thousand eight, everything changed dramatically in this country for us from an economic perspective. And our, um, you know, unfortunately, the economy has not improved dramatically. It's still pretty sluggish, and so there's a greater and greater need, there are people out there who are really suffering and who have a tremendous need for the services that our nonprofit organizations provide. And, you know, services that the county can't provide, services that the town of Silver City can't provide, and without those nonprofits, you know, they're really on the front lines there. You know, they are, are a big, huge, important piece of our social safety net. So, it's really important that they're strong and effective. Um, and again, you know, they really are a foundation for community health and prosperity. If, if we're, if the nonprofits are in there providing those services, sooner or later, we all wind up paying for that down the road. Um, and then finally, as I mentioned earlier, you know, they really are an economic force as well. The sector employs nearly ten percent of residents in Grant County. I don't know how many families that represents exactly, but ten percent is, is obviously a significant piece. Looking at data from the New Mexico Attorney General's Office, gross revenues of just thirty-five nonprofits in this county are nearly twelve million dollars, and that does not include Hidalgo Medical Services, which is registered in Hidalgo County. Um, and also, this is money, the bulk of this money is money that is coming into the county from outside. You know, much of this is private funding, foundation funding, uh, other public dollars, federal monies that are, that are being brought into the county from the nonprofit organizations that are writing grants and, um, to, you know, to provide their services. Uh, they also provide services that attract visitors and new residents. We talked a little bit about the festivals that have been provided, um, and a lot of volunteer opportunities. You know, people will come to this community, many of them are retired, and they're looking for really rich opportunities to volunteer and be involved in the community, and of course, the nonprofit sector, uh, offers those opportunities in spades. So, just again, you know, that twelve million dollars, there's some, over a hundred and twenty self-identifying nonprofits in, in the county, and so that is, it represents a very small piece of the total pie. So, here, the proposal, I, again, you, you've had this in front of you now, so hopefully, um, I'll just go through this. If you have any specific questions, feel free to just let me know. Um, so the first thing we want to do is continue providing vital strategic capacity-building services that will strengthen the nonprofits in the county. And again, um, so part of that process, I'm in, I'm right now, just getting ready to launch our annual survey of the nonprofits, to ask them specifically what kind of trainings they are interested in, workshops, what are the issues that they're facing? Um, you know, what are their, their biggest concerns right now? And then we take that information, and then that's how we design all of our training and, um, peer learning and workshop opportunities for them. The tailored capacity-building service work plans I talked about, that's when a client comes to us and says, boy, you know, we really need help. We take them through that assessment process, and then we create the work plans for them. Um, and those assessments, by the way, you know, we, I'm showing here, conducting pre- and post-intervention, NOCA and COCA. NOCA stands for Nonprofit Organizational Capacity Assessment, um, and that's what we use. We use that pre-intervention to identify the priorities and needs of the organization, and then we do that after our intervention and our consulting services to really see and make sure that the needle has moved in the right direction on those areas that, that we originally sought out, sought out to address. Um, and then finally here, provide collective... Um, and then finally here, provide collective trainings, peer learning opportunities, webinars and workshops on topics as identified by the Needs Assessment Survey. That's a process that goes on all year long. And we tailor those to meet the individual, uh, client needs. The second piece of the proposal is organizing the sector to achieve some of the following, uh, or all of the following items. Identifying opportunities for better coordination of services. If we can really organize the sector, I think there may be, there may be some redundancies. There may be opportunities for greater collaboration. Because let's face it, you know, our, our nonprofits, they can't all be funded to the level that they perhaps need to be. In, in the ideal world of, of world, of course, they would be, but you know, um, private foundation funding has been, has flatlined for the last two and a half years. And there's no, there's no indication that that's going to change. There's, there's a tremendous, um, shortage and challenge for resources all the time. So anyway, I think that there might be opportunities to really increase collaboration and coordination of services, which will make all, all of our service provision much more effective. Um, improving cross-sector collaboration for greater impact. Working with the nonprofits, for-profits, you know, we want to get the business community more involved as well as local, state, and federal government. Uh, creating and effectively marketing our organization, the Nonprofit Resource Group, as sort of a one-stop shopping point of access for the nonprofit sector. So essentially, a hub that is available, anything nonprofit does, we would be essentially the go-to place to help coordinate the nonprofit sector and, you know, and to help avoid some of the redundancies.
And you do our, right?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, the National Center for Frontier Communities, again, they're, they've been around for 10 years. We've been around for six in various forms. Uh, we were a part of the Wellness Coalition until July 1st, and that's when we moved over to the National Center for Frontier Communities.
Okay. How far along are you in your presentation?
I am almost done. I think there's two slides left.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let's see here. So, org, you know, we're organizing an annual nonprofit fair to help connect the clients with people in need of services and also to, um, improve, uh, increase volunteer support, uh, help with board recruitment, those kinds of things. Uh, we are in the process of developing a nonprofit executive director's roundtable to support and really, um, enhance the capacity of our nonprofit leaders. And then finally, we want to improve the advocacy skills within the sector so that they're more effective in working with, uh, local, state, and national government to, uh, help them remain strong and sustain their ability to provide services in our community. Uh, finally, the third piece of the proposal is to build about, build upon the collective impacts successes that we have talked about, particularly around affordable housing. Uh, one is by facilitating a second meeting. We had a meeting in May of everyone, um, the vast majority of the organizations involved in Grant County, there were 30, uh, more than 30 participants, participants in that meeting. It was a very, very good meeting. Um, and we, as a result of that, we are planning to organize a, an affordable housing fair next spring, which has never happened before. Uh, that's part, April, uh, is National Fair Housing Month. Um, this is a process that we found is facilitating greater communication and coordination among affordable housing service providers. And then finally, um, this is an opportunity to, um, enhance the capacity of Grant County Health Council and other organizations to serve with us or with other organizations as a support organization to continue moving some of these issues forward and, um, improving, in this case, access to affordable housing. Um, the one thing I just want to say here, you know, we have, in your packet, you'll see, we have very, very specific measurable outcomes. And so what this does is, you know, for the county, it assures that your dollars are effective and well-spent. You know, you, we will have, however you want to organize the reporting, in the past, we've, we've provided quarterly reporting, um, and, you know, there's all kinds of different data and, you know, again, from our assessment data, uh, we can measure, um, things like, you know, is there improvement in the areas that we're working to address? We can also look at economic data. You know, our, one of the big goals of this process is to make sure that the sector is stabilized so that no jobs are lost, so that we can stabilize the nonprofit, nonprofit sector and make sure that, um, there's no loss in service and no loss in jobs. Um, I think I've touched on most of the other points here. Um, so let me move along in the interest of time. Finally here, this is just a few, I realize this is a lot of copy on this one page, but these are just a few testimonials from some of our, uh, the customers, our clients that we've worked with for a longer period of time. One being, um, the, one being LifeQuest. And just briefly, um, the Nonprofit Resource Group has guided us in many key areas, this is from Evangeline Demora, the Executive Director of Life, uh, LifeQuest. Um, the Nonprofit Resource Group has guided us in many key areas, including grant writing, governance, quality assurance, strategic planning and marketing. Affordable vital services that we really depend on to continue providing quality services to the communities that we serve. Through our continued work with NRG, LifeQuest has created a strong business model that will, will serve our clients well into the future. And that's exactly what this proposal is about, is ensuring that clients like LifeQuest, um, people like Lee Gruber at, um, who's the founder, one of the founders of the Client Festival, that they have services to continue to be able to, uh, do great things in our community. And finally, how the proposal benefits the county. People who are in need of services that only nonprofits can provide will continue to have access and receive those services. Now more than ever, again, in the new normal, um, and I've heard it from all of, you know, the majority of our clients, they're seeing more and more people showing up in, in need of help and their resources have remained flat. Um, the sector will become more stable, which means better services and a net zero loss in jobs. Measurable outcomes, again, I've talked about that. There's some very, very specific, um, data that we can provide you so that you can see that your dollars are actually making a difference. Um, I talked about creating a hub and that means that there's, you have a greater return on your investment. Commissioner Hall and I spoke yesterday about this. You know, you, if there are four or five or six nonprofits that come to you asking for funding, you can't possibly meet the need. And so, and, and you really don't have any assurance of how those funds are going to be used or if they're going to be used effectively. Working with us and our group of, our large group of consultants, we can assure you that the funds that are used will be, will be done, they'll be provided in a professional way so that there's actual change and a difference that's, that's created. Um, and it, this, it's also an efficient means of touching on all of the Grant County Community Health Council priorities. If you look at some, just that list, that brief list of providers that we have worked with in the past, all of them in some way or another combined address all of the Grant County Community Health Council, uh, priorities. And then finally, you know, we've already worked to leverage this funding. So, in addition to the county's investment, the client pays a portion of the services that we provide. So essentially, what the county does, this funding will provide underwriting for the longer-term consulting services, but the client, based on a sliding fee scale, still provides, uh, still pays for a portion of those services. So that helps sustain this model. And then, as you know, I, um, approached the town of Silver City and, because I thought, you know, again, what we're trying to do is replace that $50,000 that Freeport provided to us last year. So 30 is a piece of it and I thought, you know, why should the county frankly bear the brawn of all of this? And so I approached, um, Town Manager Brown and he's very supportive of working together to make sure that we're able to continue providing these services to, to, uh, the residents of Grant County. So with that, again, thank you so very much. We're all in this together and I sincerely, sincerely appreciate your time and consideration of the proposal. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can we get the lights first?
I do have a question. I, um, I believe Silver City put in 15,000?
No.
Oh, okay, they have not. Have they approved any funds for your program?
Um, actually, there was, uh, I have a letter, I think that was in your box. If not, I have a copy of it. Um, Alex just, he told me, said if the county supports the proposal, we will support, we will, we will provide 15,000.
And they did most of their money from grocery receipts. We get ours from taxes. Why them 15 and us 30?
Well, again, I didn't really approach it from looking at who is going to provide what. You know, the 30,000 frankly, um, that came out of a meeting with myself and Susan Welger and Manager Sari back in June.
Sari?
And so, you know, that number frankly was, uh...
Past manager?
What was suggested was $10,000 from each commissioner's discretionary funding. So that's where the 30,000 came from.
Well, honestly, when it comes to my money, my, my main goal is to take care of these projects that we've got going on right now. I mean, that we, we're so, uh, we are low on funds. I, I wish that we had a, a magic wand to create more funds, but, uh, I really want to stick to projects that we have on our priority list. Although this is a great program, I'm not saying that I'm not going to support this. I'm going to have to give it a lot of thought, uh, taking any monies out of my discretionary funds for this. Because I think I, I really would like to see some of my discretionary funds going into our civic center or, or, uh, other big projects that we know need a lot of money being that, uh, unfortunately, our bond didn't pass. So we're going to have to start using some of these funds that we had allocated to help other organizations like yourself for these projects that are very, very highly needed and, uh, and funded. So, that's, I mean, underfunded. And that's, that's where, where I stand on this right now. I'm, I'm going to have to really think about it.
Well, I'd be happy, Commissioner, to, uh, to talk to you about it if you have questions. You know, again, I think for this investment, we're already leveraging, you know, we've already nearly, well, between the math from the clients and the contribution from the town of Silver City, we've already nearly doubled that amount of money.
And I understand that, just that the pie is only so big and there's only so many places it can go. And, uh, that's why I feel the way I do.
No, I understand. I mean, it's the same situation that our nonprofits are in. I mean, resources are tight and it, it's challenging. There's no question.
Is Patty going to get lucky and you going to completely lose your voice?
Uh, probably. Probably.
Commissioner?
Very much, you know, you and I had a quite lengthy discussion yesterday and I asked a lot of my questions then. I think my biggest, you know, I echo, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Ramos stated about, we're going to have to be really careful because our funds are few and demands are great. And all of them have a, have a heart-wrenching story. Uh, the other problem I have is that I think sustainability is so important. And my concern is this, is that we do this this year, the next year you come back. I don't have a problem in getting someone going, but to come back every year and for us to almost put it into our budget, I have a problem with. But gosh, there's others that come up that desperately need this too, as discussed by Commissioner Ramos. So, I, I think I've had all mine answered, all the questions answered, uh, by you and I appreciate it. We spent quite some time yesterday talking about this. And, uh, and that's something that I'm going to give you some thought to. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess just one final comment. Um, you know, I think one thing that this does too is help the county, when you have individual nonprofits that come to you asking for funding, rather, again, rather than do that and frankly, um, not be able to really meet the need of, of meeting individual, um, requests, this is an opportunity to provide funding to one organization and then have those nonprofits come to us for help with, whether it's fundraising, grant writing, whatever the services that they may be. And I can tell you that we are working very hard to build a sustainable model. And that's why we, you know, we didn't go back to Freeport because we don't think it's the right thing to do for the community or for the nonprofits.
They talked about yesterday coming to us, aren't you in competition with those nonprofits for the money that you're asking for from us and the, and the taxpayers? It's the same thing? You've done the same thing?
Well, actually, I, you know, I see it a little bit differently because the county, again, cannot possibly meet the need. Whereas we already have a number of resources that if the county funds our program, we can then use that funding to, um, provide those resources to the nonprofit sector. And with our program, you have an assurance of guaranteed outcomes. Because we are, everything is evaluated, everything is measured, we have a very clear process for identifying, um, goals and meeting those goals. Whereas if you just write a check to whatever, you know, XYZ nonprofit, you have no idea how those funds are going to be used or if they're going to be well-spent. Whereas with our program, you do.
And, and lastly, maybe the challenge ought to be if Mr. Brown and the city would commit themselves to 15, then maybe we would consider it.
They, well, he has. There's a letter addressed to the commission, signed by Mr. Brown, saying that he...
If we did it, he would do it.
Right, because again, we're all in this together, you know? That's why the proposal's titled Better Together, because this is an issue, you know? The nonprofits, again, they provide services that touch every single resident of this county, whether they use those services or not. Because it...
For some reason, you didn't get the funds. What are, what are you, what other avenue are you looking at to collect funds and help yourself there?
Well, you know, frankly, we, we have a funding proposal into the McCune Foundation. They have supported us very generously in the past. Why generously, I can't, right now, their average, uh, grant is about $12,000, which is a far cry from the 50,000 that we really need to provide the same level of service. Um, we work very closely with Colin Elma. She's a Dolores Royball, the executive director there, is a very big supporter of our program. Um, but frankly, our Colin Elma dollars right now are being used in Eddy County. We're doing a project there in Carlsbad. And so I guess, and I, one of the, the biggest things that we've done in terms of our own sustainability is to join the National Center for Frontier Communities. Because what that does is allow us to now be working at a, a national level to bring in dollars from all over the country, federal dollars as well. But again, you know, we're, we've only been with NCSC since July. So if this funding, if we don't have funding, um, we will not go to Freeport again. Um, so this, those longer-term strategic consulting services that we have, that data has shown is the most effective, well, we won't be able to provide those. That's the bottom line. You know, and believe me, if I had other, if I could wave a magic wand and had other resources, I would not be coming to the county because I know that you have a lot of priorities and there's a lot of needs out there. But we just really think that the services that the nonprofit sector provide, not only from a human services perspective, but from a, an economic development perspective, are, are vitally important to everybody. And sooner or later, if those needs are not met, we all wind up paying and we pay a whole lot more than making this kind of investment upfront.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Uh, we're on resolutions. Approved or disapproved, resolution number R-1369. Section three of the Housing and Urban Development Act, I believe this has something to do with CDPG.
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner, this is just part of the CDPG process. Um, we passed two resolutions last, passed two resolutions last meeting, um, this was the third. We were just waiting on the income numbers to come in and I received those from the COG. Priscilla graciously provides those to me each year. And so those are plugged in here now, so this is ready to be approved by the commission.
Commissioner, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-dash-13-dash-69, section three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1969.
Second. President, making the second to approve R-1369. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Seeing none, all those in favor, send a nod. Say a aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Approved or disapproved, resolution... Approved or disapproved resolution number R-1371, creating the Viva Santa Rita subdivision Community Area Improvement District? I guess this is number one on that list that you were talking about, Abby? Three?
Four.
Oh, leave, no, four? Whatever. Okay. Can you get a motion?
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve resolution number R-1371, creating the Viva Santa Rita subdivision Community Area Improvement District.
And I second. Motion is second to approve R-1371. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. County reports. Anthony, you're in the back, have you got anything to say? I knew you did. Sitting on the end.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I always have something to say, but I forgot to discuss one thing during our work session, and you've had a pretty lengthy meeting, so I'm going to try and keep it as short as possible, but I did want to mention that we had some pretty successful projects as far as funding was concerned. We got pretty beat up when we did our projects out there on the 211 Bridge and on the Iron Bridge. And we had to go to bat against several agencies, which, the Fish and Wildlife Service, the Mexico Environment Department, although our local representatives were pretty willing to work with us, the people from Santa Fe and from Washington weren't near as easy to work with. Even to the point where we had meetings and I had people getting up in my face, you know what I mean, and really, really got offended by what we did out there. But I would like to say that I think that they were extremely successful projects. The Army Corps of Engineers agrees. We've already done a site visit out there. They said that as far as they were concerned, they were top-notch. And what people don't understand is we were already two years in engineering, trying to get the perfect project for all of these agencies, and with very little luck and very little agreement. And so with the emergency situation that we had and declaration of emergency, we're able to do the things we wanted to do. They were extremely successful. We see counties like Catron County, who I think have numbers up in the, in the tens of millions now on damages they've received. Sierra County is insane, they have millions of dollars worth of damage. And we look at Grant County, we have very minimal, some of the ditch associations have some problems, but they're in the tens of thousands of dollars, probably not even going to, probably not even qualify for federal dollars because they were so minimal. And so I just wanted to bring that up to the commissioner's attention, that although sometimes we take pretty hard hits, we're doing it for the good of the people and for the good of Grant County. We saved a lot of dollars. If we had lost one of those bridges out there, it would have been in the millions of dollars. And so while sometimes we don't do things that are too popular, and people may disagree with me, but we do what we got to do, and I think that this is a good, this is a good sign that, you know what, we don't do things just on a whim. We take some time, think about them, and try and do them successfully, so.
Thank you very much, Anthony. I did inspect those, and I was, well, you know, I was excited when I called you and told you it was working, when I was out inspecting the barns, so, yeah, it was, that's a neat deal when things like that happen. Mary, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Rob?
Commissioner, I just want to thank the fair for another successful year, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I've been married 19 years, I had an anniversary that weekend, wasn't able to make it out there. But congratulations to all the kids that participated. Also wanted to see if, John, you can schedule a meeting with Army Corps of Engineers, and hopefully we can facilitate a meeting between them and Santa Clara. They did have some major damage in their area. There was a few houses affected at the very end of their, of their town, city limits. So I'd really like to see if we can facilitate that. I did talk to Congressman Pierce, which came and visited to the site the following day, and he wants to do everything he can to help them out. So if we can do that, I'd appreciate that. I believe that is it. Anthony, thank you very much for all you have done, and I'm glad you brought that up, because it was very unpopular what we're doing out there when it came to moving rock and moving dirt and what have you, but I think it's been a big success, so congratulations, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, it was only unpopular with a very small portion of the...
Well, it's the same group that has a lot of unpopular comments for us. But we do what we can, we do the best we can, so thank you again.
Commissioner?
I'd just like to reiterate what I talked about Tuesday, was that I had a meeting with the hospital administration, was very pleased with their progress, and Mr. Cunningham and his administration and what they're doing. So just kudos to them and continue to work. They've identified the problem, now we've got to, they've got to try to resolve it.
Thank you very much. And we'll just continue working on getting the Affordable Care Act centers open and get those to where people can actually find out if they're eligible, if they need to go on Medicaid, or where they're at. We're going to have an executive session today, so we will adjourn from the executive session, so I would take a motion.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can you take a roll call?
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner, Chairman Cash, now are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering?
I am.
We're now in executive session.